Oh, I mean, I got, it's on my meeting list, you know, I polished off a bunch of them as you now. I didn't like, uh, I didn't like, uh...
Who? Oh, okay.
Jeffersons, okay. I thought it was very, uh, ad olos. He had six hundred and ten slates on his plate, he raised them, he only started out with twenty. I like that one. I didn't like Jefferson.
Good evening, everyone. I will call the Board of Selectmen, town of Wolfboro. This is the August sixteenth, two thousand and seventeen meeting to order. Uh, Mr. Owen, do we have a need for non-public tonight?
Just some non-public meeting minutes that need to be reviewed, uh, if you want to do that this evening.
Okay. We have, uh, approval of the minutes from the, uh, August second, two thousand and seventeen regular meeting. Board members, any, uh, corrections to those?
I don't.
I irritate a motion to accept the minutes as written.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Moving on, we have, uh, one public hearing tonight. It's a, uh, temporary outdoor event permit. Calvary, Wolfboro, to hold Wolfboro Kid Games on August twenty-fourth, two thousand and seventeen, from five P.M. to nine P.M. And August twenty-fifth, two thousand and seventeen, from nine A.M. to nine P.M. at forty-three Mill Street. Is there anyone here to speak to that tonight?
Well, maybe they aren't.
Mr. Chairman, shall we, uh, table it till later in the meeting in case somebody shows up?
Sure. It looks like they have, they would have, mm, they wouldn't have time, actually.
So why don't we just, um...
Table it to the end of the meeting.
I'll ta, I'll make that motion to table it to the end of the meeting.
Second? Second. Dave seconded, uh. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, move that to the end of the meeting. New business. Uh, next we have the, uh, bulk vote, which includes weekly manifest, property tax abatements and refunds, property tax credits and exemptions, notices, denials, notices of intent to, uh, cut lumber. And, uh, so, any, uh, issues with any of those? If not, I entertain a motion to accept the bulk vote.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Under new business, appointments, uh, alternate member of the Economic Development Committee. Uh, Mr. Owen?
Uh, yes, uh, we had, uh, expression of interest in, uh, participating in the Economic Development Committee by Bill Peterson. He's, uh, the Reverend at the Episcopal Church. But, uh, prior to that, he, he worked in the hospitality and tourism, um, field. And, uh, he feels that he has, uh, a lot to offer and, uh, would like to participate. We have a full, um, slate of full members of the E.D.C. right now, nine members, but we do have, uh, one alternate's position available if the board wish to appoint him to that.
Board?
And the Economic Development Committee supports his appointment. I'll make a motion that we appoint William Peterson, um, to, as an alternate to the Economic Development Committee, uh, until April thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, next, new business, uh, monthly budget expenditures and revenue report.
Good evening. Pete Chamberlain, Director of Finance. I present my report for July the thirty-first, which is fifty-eight point three percent through the year. At this particular point in time, the general fund is at around sixty-one percent. Water at seventy-two and a half. Electric fund is at fifty-two. Sewer at approximately seventy-two percent. Pop whaling at fifty-seven. An average of approximately sixty percent for the year. Uh, seem to be going along fairly nicely. If there are any questions on the expense side of the report?
I, I have one. Uh, first of all, I want to thank you for going over the capital outlay projects and giving us that report. I found that very helpful.
Sure.
Um, the other one I, uh, saw was the town, in-town clerks' budget. The health insurance was at seventy percent, and I was wondering whether we had a misposting there.
Uh, I'll have to check that, Linda, yeah.
Those are the only ones I have.
Yeah. And I also, uh, handed out a, um, a new revenue report, which again seems to be pretty much where it needs to be, a little plus for the year. Certainly, the electric line, uh, purchase line item is in good shape this year, so I think we're fairly solid footing right now.
Also, the board for Chairman. Okay?
That's it. Thank you.
Please be.
Next we have, uh, some discussion of, uh, Kingswood Golf Club, uh, installing a, uh, rectangular rapid flashing beacon on, uh, South Main Street at the crosswalk used by golfers across, uh, the highway. Is there someone here to speak to that?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I have copies of my statement. If you would like it, I can hand them out later on.
Could you just state your name for the record?
Yes, uh, my name is Sebastian Torrenato, and I'm on the Board of Directors of Kingswood Golf Club. Kingswood is a member-owned golf course, which is open to the general public. As such, Kingswood provides a substantial economic benefit to the town of Wolfboro by attracting non-local players, encouraging tourism and commerce, and providing local employment opportunities. Tonight, I'd like to address an issue which we consider to be of significant importance: public safety at the South Main Street, uh, crossing. In order to access the entire course, players must cross South Main Street twice per round of golf, once going out and once to return. Our golf season typically runs from April through October. Within that seven-month period, we will average sixteen thousand five hundred to nineteen thousand rounds of golf at Kingswood. The exact number is somewhat dependent on the weather, but sixteen thousand for a low end, nineteen thousand for a good season. When you also consider staff, the school teams are from Brewster, Kingswood, and Prospect Mountain, and the grounds maintenance crew, the number of individuals crossing South Main Street can easily exceed forty thousands in a seven-month period. As currently configured, the crossing area doesn't provide clarity in the minds of passing motorists. Although there exist a pedestrian crossing signs on each side of the road, the crossing itself is not marked on the pavement, is not striped like other pedestrian crosswalks. Therefore, motorists are uncertain how to respond. Should they stop? Are they required to stop? And then again, some take it as a signal of, we, they should speed up and get through there before somebody gets out on the crosswalk. Although this in of itself could be considered to compromise public safety, a bigger problem emerges when the first motorist stops and the second or third one in line fails to do so. Since two thousand and five through June of two thousand and seventeen, there have been fourteen reported accidents at or within a hundred feet of the crossing. Twelve of those accidents occurred between the months of April and November, the time of the year when the crossing is active for Kingswood. Regrettably, my son was one of those statistics. He was, uh, he was the second vehicle in line and the third one failed to stop. He was rear-ended, pushed into the vehicle into the first, pushed his vehicle into the first, and luckily, there were no major injuries, but the vehicle was totaled. And personally, I've had, I've nearly been struck twice while crossing South Main Street, most recently just last week. In order to avoid rear-ending a stopped vehicle, the second in line came around into the oncoming lane where I was crossing in a golf cart. And I got a real good, close up view of a F-150 Ford Grille, not something I want to do every day. And however, uh, if, and, and a fellow golfer tells a similar story that occurred a few years ago. However, instead of turning into the oncoming lane, the following vehicle ran up onto the sidewalk. Thank goodness it didn't occur at the time when school had just let out for the day. That would have truly been a disaster. Thus far, the damage has been mostly limited to vehicles, but the hazard to individuals is very real, whether it's an individual crossing the road or a motorist in a vehicle. With large number of crossings and increased traffic during peak vacation season, it's only a matter of time before the unthinkable happen and someone is severely injured at the crossing. With due consideration given to all these factors, we requested a meeting with Mr. Dave Ford, who's here tonight, to explore the requirements for a state-compliant pedestrian crosswalk with a flashing beacon. As a representative of Kingswood Golf Club, I'm here tonight to formally request the Board of Selectmen to consider upgrading the crossing at the golf course and South Main Street. We understand that this is not an insignificant request and that substantial money is approximately fifty thousand dollars will be required. Kingswood Golf Club is committed to ensuring the health and safety of our staff, our players, and our guests, as well as passing motorists. Our commitment is such that we're willing to cost-share this project at a level of fifty percent. In addition, although we are aware that it's not completely within the purview of the town of Wolfboro, we would also like to have the speed limit in the area reduced to thirty miles an hour. The high school speed limit is thirty miles an hour, and three hundred yards down the road towards town, the speed limit is again thirty miles an hour. It makes no sense to have a forty mile an hour speed limit for a thousand feet of road frontage, which is the golf course and the wind drifter. Any assistance from the town in that endeavor will be greatly appreciated. And I thank you for your time. Uh, also, we have, uh, we had one other issue just come up, uh, this week. It was a noise complaint, and I have another board member who would like to address the board in the Public Input section, if that would be okay. Otherwise, we can make a formal request. Thank you for your time. I'm willing to answer any questions if you have them.
Board members?
Have you had any conversations with D.O.T. yet?
Not yet. We've only spoken to Mr. Ford.
I know I tried to do this many years ago as a member of Kingswood. And what they told us was we couldn't put a crosswalk because it's not a thirty-five, it has to be thirty-five mile an hour or less. Changing the speed limit may do that for you.
Yes.
But they are not going to let you put in a crosswalk while it's forty miles an hour.
How do we get the speed limit changed?
That's what they told us at the time. Same thing with the beacon.
Yeah.
That's why you have the blinking lights down by the wind drifter and up on the other end.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense. If you, if you're at the high school, it's thirty miles an hour. For a thousand feet, it's forty miles an hour, and then it drops down to thirty miles an hour. It should be thirty miles from the, from the high school all the way through town.
Forty miles an hour, I think it starts down, um...
It goes all the way forty miles an hour, except when the blinking light's on for school.
Yes, that's correct.
Well, that, that was an issue many years ago. Because we looked, at that time, at a tunnel. We looked at a lot of different things that were very expensive.
I understand.
But, uh, I do know that that's where you are going to run into a, a bit of a problem unless town petitions D.O.T. for a change in the speed limit. That, that's my recollection of it back...
Well, I, I guess...
Probably seven, seven or eight years ago.
Well, and, and again, I, I would appreciate, or we would appreciate, any help we can get from the town to help us in, in getting the state to change their mind and dropping the speed limit to allow the crosswalk to go in.
Yeah, um, in two thousand and six, the town had this discussion with the Kingswood Golf Course. And the difference is a pedestrian crossing and the crosswalk. A pedestrian crossing, it is the pedestrian's job to make sure it's safe to cross. Once you make it a crosswalk, then it becomes the driver's responsibility to stop. And that, at that particular time, they felt that a crosswalk would produce more rear-end accidents than a pedestrian crossing. So I'm, believe it should stay a pedestrian crossing. At that time, they did talk about, um, trying to get the state to move it down to forty miles an hour. One of the things I did was to drive that area and take a look at the signage. Most of the signs are covered partially by trees and branches.
Yes, that's correct.
And, so people don't even have a good visibility of the signs themselves coming out of town. The blink area, that is eight hundred feet from the crosswalk, is way off to the side, not toward the road. So I think there's some work that we absolutely should do about the signage that's there. And, um, I think that would help with some of the issues that you're having, because if you can't see the sign...
I agree, I agree with the signage, yes. The signs could be better, it could be clearer. It could, some of the trees should be trimmed so it could be visible. What, what I still think is going to be a problem, even though you see the pedestrian crossing, uh, in all the other crossings, you see, there's a little, you know, placard that's sitting in the middle of the street...
Because it's a crosswalk, this is not...
I know, for crosswalks, so people stop, and they know they have to stop. And this is, and the point of, I think, why we have these accidents at this crossing is because of the uncertainties. Motorists don't know, are they supposed to stop or are they not supposed to stop? Do, is it, you know, do they just keep going? And then, once in a while, you get somebody, well, I'm going to be a nice guy. He stops, he causes a rear-end accident. I understand that it's, you know, maybe he shouldn't, but it's still unclear what, to the motorists, they don't know what to do. I mean, I see it when, when I'm sitting in a golf cart waiting to cross the road. You see them, you know, they're, they're pumping the brakes, they don't, they're accelerating. They don't know what to do. You know, it's sort of like they're, they're deer caught in the headlights. It's, it's one of these things that creates uncertainties and creates a public hazard. That's all I'm saying. If we could make it clearer by making it a crosswalk, reducing the speed limit, making it a crosswalk, I believe it would be fewer accidents and less of a hazard.
Thank you for your input. I, you know, we've been over this, and to me, it's the difference between a pedestrian crossing and a crosswalk. And I drive down South Main Street all the time. And one of the things I do before I stop is to check my rear-view mirror to see where, how far a car is coming behind me. And if somebody's on my bumper, I keep right on going because I, I, I can't, because I can't count that they will, so... But thank you for bringing your concerns to us, and I hope that we can deal with the signs that are there now this summer and get those branches and stuff cut back so people can see two or three signs that are clearly marked that you can't see because there's a branch.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions?
I, I think that, uh, I'd be in favor of a better signage in a crosswalk. I think a flashing light is something the town has to pay for and maintain. We also have, uh, I think all of us know that live in town, most of us drive cautiously, like, like driving through downtown. You don't know whether somebody's coming out from behind the car secretly. Uh, probably the what most, uh, dan, the most used crosswalk in town outside of the main thing is, is connecting the two parts of, uh, Clark Plaza. You know, that, that, but, uh, motorists do stop, and, and I'm, I would probably suggest that, uh, the police department weigh in on this, uh, and, uh, as has been mentioned, does Brewster want a crosswalk? Does Clark Plaza want one? You want one? Uh, what, maybe ask the police to advise the board on what they would recommend. I think we're all for safety.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just to answer a couple quicker since Dave just brought up, just Dave Ford, Public Works Director. On Center Street, we are putting in a rapid flashing beacon. So what they're asking for is now going to be standard at all crosswalks, new crosswalks, and when we upgrade crosswalks. So what they're asking for is going to go in at Center Street, being paid one-third by the town, two-thirds by the state, and then we'll be responsible for maintaining. That is a crosswalk which is different. In this situation here, as you recall, we had a, um, stakeholders meeting about the corridor, and, uh, we looked at different intersections, and I recall specifically Reverend Dale's, who lives at the, uh, who's, I don't, I don't think is a golfer, but he was very adamant that someone's going to get killed at this intersection. And, uh, clearly, the best solution would be a, a tunnel underneath. Uh, that is, uh, at least half a million to a million-dollar project, and, and I think it's beyond the means of the golf course or the town to do that. Uh, what is the next best option? You can do nothing and continue to have forty thousand trips across that road a day and have all these near misses, or you can, uh, do two things. Reduce the speed limit, which I am full support of reducing the speed limit, not only because of the golfers, but because of the walkers. We have a lot of traffic between the middle school, high school, and tech school, and we have a lot of bikers, and we're trying to encourage more walking and more biking. So to take a, a position that, hey, welcome to Wolfboro, please slow down. Thirty miles an hour is our constant from the high school all the way in, I think is a, a position that I'm fully supportive, and I would recommend the Board of Selectmen, uh, petition the sele, uh, the D.O.T. to reduce the speed limit. Second, we are going to get the request from Brewster Academy, because I have talked to Lisa Brademan. Uh, she is, wants the same thing. She wants a, uh, she sees a lot of, her house is right there. She sees a lot of students almost get near misses. And that is a crosswalk, but it's not lit. So where, where everyone, there should be no confusion there. There should, but there is a problem because you can't see, and this flashing beacon is designed to alert drivers far enough in advance, so if they're paying attention, they'll be able to stop. If they're playing on the phone or doing other things, distracted, they're still going to have the rear end. So we, that's not going to go away. But the D.O.T., the rules are based on giving a motorist...
We have a copy of that from Center Street.
...the time to react to the flashing beacon. In this situation here, the reason they were asking, and I am full support of their, of their, um, uh, proposal to put a flashing beacon here, uh, because of the amount of traffic we're seeing. Forty thousand trips, that's a lot of potential conflicts, and it's going to slow traffic down. And, and it's, and the intent would be, and then, in addition, regardless of what happens, we, we should have D.O.T. clear that right-of-way so we have a better visibility of the, the one sign we have. But I think additional signs, uh, would be helpful, and the flashing beacon would be helpful. And I think, uh, you know, to, to do nothing is, is to just wait for the unfortunate day when there's, and there's a worse accident. Uh, at least if we try, and, and again, what they're asking for is a partnership, and I, I feel strongly that this is both a public safety issue, as well as a golf course issue, which I think is a reasonable proposal. And again, I think you'll see the, uh, Brewster Academy coming in at some point also. So this might be two cents. Any questions? Thank you.
Chief?
Good evening. I'm, uh, Chief Rondo, Chief of Police for Wolfboro P.D. As it stands right now, I cannot support, uh, putting a crosswalk there at, at the golf course. Um, the, the reason being is because as, uh, the, uh, speaker before me had said that we had about fourteen, uh, car crashes, they're, they're occurring when the golf course is open. They're occurring because the golfers or the golf carts are waiting to cross. People are stopping, not like you, where you look at your rear-view mirror, and the cars behind them don't have enough time to stop. That's exact, these are all rear-end collisions. And then the golf carts cross, and, you know, we're, we're left screaming down there with the fire rescue and the ambulance and, and cleaning up the mess. Uh, I am supportive of what Dave Ford said in terms of lowering the speed limit. I think that's a great idea. But I still think that if you put a crosswalk there regardless, you're going to have these crashes. The speeds on that portion of South Main Street are routinely forty miles an hour and above. We stop a lot of cars on that road. These are, are, are speeds that we see all the time, especially when school is in session, especially when the kids are trying to get to school and coming home from school. You're not going to change that. You can put a crosswalk in. Um, we have speeding cars in South Main Street. I just spent the better part of two weeks walking foot patrols downtown, watching the pedestrians not use the crosswalk and watching the cars speed through the center of town. So it's going to happen, and we're going to continue to have car crashes. Another alternative may be for the golf course to hire a flagger. And for the, the nine or so months, put a flagger out there, and he can step out when it's safe to do so, and, and cross the, uh, the carts and the golfers and so forth and so on. So there, there's a, there's a few different options. I, I'm not sure that this is incumbent upon the town to put in fifty thousand dollars or to dig a tunnel underneath South Main Street or whatever the case may be. I, I just don't think that. But I am not supportive of putting a crosswalk. I think we're going to have more accidents and not less. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Can I make one more comment? And if you put this in, are you talking about removing any of the signage and the blinking lights that are already there on your way in? There is a light that blinks with a picture of a pedestrian that says eight hundred and fifty, eight hundred feet ahead, pedestrians. That's all. It doesn't say crossing, and, um, there's one going in either direction right now. Um, so I, I would really like Dave Ford, you to go out, to take a look at where some of those are, and, um, to, to get some kind of a, a way of using what we already have there. We have a blinking light that's going like this right now. Well, I was there today, Dave.
Okay, well, we'll discuss this as we move forward with the sp, the speed limit, and, uh, it is, uh, the board will make a...
I have no problem requesting the state to lower the speed limit, if that makes more sense. I'm, I'm more than willing to do that.
I, I support that.
What, what did you say?
Lowering the speed limit or asking the state to, as the board, asking the state to lower the speed limit in that area, thirty miles an hour.
I, I would support that.
What's that?
Dave? Yeah, I'll make a, a motion that, uh, if, uh, Mr. Owen could draft a letter to, uh, D.O.T., uh, stating that, uh, Board of Selectmen of Wolfboro wishes to strongly suggest that, uh, D.O.T. take a look at reducing the, uh, speed limit along, uh, South Main Street to, uh, thirty miles an hour in that zone.
Yeah, I'll support the area we're voting.
I'm, I'm making a motion.
Aye, since I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Y'all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's the first step, I think. See that, uh, gentleman from, uh, Calvary Church just walked in, so put that up again here, since he's here now. Uh, so this is a temporary outdoor event permit, Calvary, Wolfboro, to hold Wolfboro Kid Games on August twenty-fourth, two thousand and seventeen, from five P.M. to nine P.M. And August twenty-fifth, two thousand and seventeen, from nine A.M. to nine P.M. at forty-three Mill Street.
Uh, yes, good evening. Apologize for being late. Uh, yeah, we're requesting permission to hold this, uh, public event for children, first grade through fifth grade, uh, on our property. Uh, our plan is to, um, have a bunch of different activities, uh, an obstacle course for them. Uh, we will, we have a permit already in place to set up our tent, um, so we can serve lunch. And, uh, the goal is just to reach out to the young kids of the community, invite them, uh, to come and, hopefully have fun with one another, have a great time in the summer, and, uh, just get to meet new faces and, uh, enjoy the property that we have and, uh, have a great time.
So I'll open the, uh, public hearing. Is there, uh, members of the audience that have any questions about the event, or? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, any questions?
I have one, and it will be part of the form you get from the letter, but it says, "No off-premise signage." So you can get a temporary sign permit that allows you to have two signs. They can go up two weeks in advance, but they cannot be sprinkled all through town, uh, publicizing the event.
Uh, yes, ma'am, I...
That's part of what's on here.
Okay, I think right now we just have, uh, one that we got a permit for at Brewster, um, that we have up...
That's fine, yeah.
And then one on our property, and I believe that's all we have.
I think when you did the one for the Fourth of July, they were sprinkled all over town, I think.
Oh, yeah, we had, uh, yard signs for some of our congregation, and, uh, some of the people took their yard signs and placed them in other places, and so we've told them from here on out...
And I think that's what he's referring to here.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, so we've told them to keep yard signs in their sign, in their yards from now on.
Hey, uh, Mayor, I'll make the motion to, uh, to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to Calvary, Wolfboro, to hold Wolfboro Kid Games on August twenty-fourth, two thousand and seventeen, from five P.M. to nine P.M. And on August twenty-fifth, two thousand and seventeen, from nine A.M. to nine P.M. at forty-three Mill Street.
And there's to be no off-premise... And there's to be no off-premise-
There's to be no off-premise signs, other than the ones that you have a permit for.
Correct.
Sounds good.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Any discussion from the board? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Moving on, we have a discussion on the Center Street construction project. Mr. Ford?
Yes, I apologize for not being able to give you an update earlier, but that's because we're in a little bit of a difficult situation. The contractor was unaware of certain requirements that came up as a result of the petroleum products that are in the right of way. When the health and safety plan came out, they were told that they have to have a forty hour OSHA Hazwapper training class. That's pretty significant, and it's, everybody who's on the team has to have that training. So we're scrambling now to find the training, and they're going to have to shut the company down for a whole week to do the training. As a result, it's delayed the test pitting, which we had hoped was going to start right in the middle of August, and the construction was going to start after Labor Day. At this point, we're still, and then as a result of, and this is kind of the new world we're in, with new regulations or, and they'll say, well, not new regulations, we're just enforcing the regulations that were there, but a lot of companies are in the same boat. As a result, the only trainers are all booked for the rest of the year. So we're really, I'm very nervous about this, and I'm trying, we're trying to figure out if there's a way around it. Obviously, we've dug through this, our guys digging it all the time, but it's no longer something we can just not look the other way. We've got to meet the requirements, and so that's going to delay. So at this point, we're looking at potentially, you know, two to three weeks after Labor Day, but that could change, and I'll be here the first meeting in September to give you a better update at that point. So that could be a significant issue, and we're trying to work around and figure out what's going on, but I think we're not the only one, and it has to do with that we have five old gas stations that have leaking gasoline that hasn't leaked in over twenty-seven years. But this is the remnants, there's a plume, and it just, again, I think we're making a mountain out of a molehill, but we got to do it.
But we put, we allocated extra money last year in order to address some of the-
The good-
So we have the funds, so if this costs us more, we're okay?
Well, the good news is the pet fund, the petroleum fund, is funding a hundred percent of all the contamination costs. But it does not cover the training. It was assumed that the contractor would know, but there's no way, you know, the engineer did a terrible job, I shouldn't be saying that, but it wasn't made clear to the bidders. No one would have known that they had to have a forty hour hazmat. And now, it's like, okay, so it's kind of, it's a big setback for us, and they're trying to get through it. But the cost is reimbursable, and there are issues with that now, because in the old days, and we've done it here in town, you lay a plastic down and you stockpile it, and then you test it, and then if it goes to a landfill or not. Well, nowadays, we can't do that. We have to, you know, it's even more complicated. It has to go back on the lot that it came from. We have five separate lots. Each of those lots does not have any room to store the material. This contamination happened, you know, forty, fifty years ago. So the regulations are ridiculous, and we're going to have to put everything into a truck, and then the truck's going to have to be hauled directly to the landfill or incinerator, even if it may not be contaminated, because you've got to test it to see if it meets the level. So it's, we're really struggling with these, new interpretation of these requirements, and as a result, it's going to have an impact on schedule. And again, I apologize. It came upon us in the last couple of weeks. We hope it would get resolved quicker, but it seemed to be like Pandora's box. You know, we thought it was going to be a relatively simple thing, we had the funding, and all of a sudden, now it's like, ah. So I'll give you updates when I find out. Again, apologize for that, but if you have any other questions about that project, I felt I wanted to, I hope that I had better information that we could start, because we're going to get out to all the stakeholders. We did meet with a lot of the businesses, and we were going to get back out to them before construction started, and also do a public relations campaign, trying to explain to everyone that businesses will be open during construction, and do everything we can to mitigate the disruption to the businesses. That's still happening.
So are you saying that the project is going to be two to three weeks delayed?
As a minimum at this point, but it could be much more.
Okay.
I mean, the worst-case scenario is it doesn't start until next spring.
Okay, so that means that we could very easily have one-way traffic in the Falls or Center Street area next summer? Because we were supposed to be, we-
No, we, unless we have a change, and that would have to be between DOT and the town. The town and the DOT have specified there'd be no one lane during our busy season, July and August.
Either, either time, so, okay, so if it goes, gets pushed, and we get a seat-
We would come back to you and have this discussion. If we felt, hey, we have a couple of days, we've got to do this to finish up the project, then we might make the request to extend the one, the detours. But I don't see that happening, because I think the DOT, as well as the town, is realizing our businesses have to make their money during these three months, and we can't do that disruption.
I just wanted to make sure, if we shift, that that same thing will hold for the business community?
It holds now, but we need to keep the door open, because maybe it's a couple of weeks, and I, so I don't want to see, but-
Okay.
Understanding, everyone's aware of it.
Okay.
And hopefully, we'll get back on schedule in September, maybe October, and get some work done this fall. But until we get this training issue squared away, I can't, but it'd be at least, so nothing will happen, at least until mid-September, and that would be test pits with construction following. And again, I'll have an update in two weeks. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have approval for a grant agreement with the New Hampshire Department of Safety, Homeland Security, and Emergency Management, or a emergency operations plan update. Chief?
Good evening. James Penniel, Fire Chief, Emergency Management Director of Towne and Wolfboro. If you recall, in the 2017 budget process, we raised and appropriated the sum of forty-five hundred dollars for the purpose of hiring an outside contractor to come in and assist us in the development and implementation and updating of our current emergency operations plan. We've gone through the process, we've been approved the grant. The grant is for the amount of forty-five hundred to be dispersed to the vendor as work begins. Once the project is complete, which is a hundred and eighty days from the completion of the grant, we will, in return from the state of New Hampshire, receive those funds of forty-five hundred dollars back. It's pretty straightforward. This is, this is a model that a lot of communities our size are beginning to utilize, and it will very much so follow the state plan. So if we have representatives from the state coming in, it's mirroring the state plan very nicely. I can attempt to answer any other questions that you may have.
Are you going to have any, we had an emergency management committee, is that going to be involved in this, or is it going to be done just on staff level?
That's a great question. I had spoken with Mr. Owen about this. I think it makes good sense to be able to reactivate that committee, to get input from the community. And those, that time as well is credited toward the grant process, to help us with the matching funds. So, yeah, it would make sense to go ahead and reappoint that committee. I'm not sure how you go about that, but absolutely.
I think the board did it, didn't they?
Right, the board set up the committee, and I've got the roster somewhere in a file of who was on it before, and we would have to determine who's still around and who we need to recruit new representatives from.
I guess we need a motion to accept the grant here. So I'll make it.
Second.
I'll move to accept the terms of the Emergency Management Performance Grant as presented in the amount of four thousand five hundred dollars to update the community local emergency operation plan. Further, the board acknowledges that the total cost of this project will be nine thousand dollars, in which the town will be responsible for a fifty percent match of four thousand five hundred. Further, the board authorizes the town manager to sign all documents related to the grant.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all is in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have acceptance of a gift of less than ten thousand dollars from the Friends of Town Hall.
Good evening. My name is Joyce Davis. I'm representing the Friends of Wolfboro Town Hall. The Friends are very much interested in seeing that the clock tower clock is maintained and keeps as accurate a time as possible. We think it's a really important component of the building and an asset to the community. When Phil Devonza was redoing the clock faces recently, apparently, he took a look at the clock mechanism and recommended to the town that some regular maintenance be performed on the clock, because as this comes, it's no surprise, nothing had been done to the components of the clock in a very long time. So Mr. Devonza put together an estimate of work on the time portion of the clock, and his estimate was for four thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. And the scope of the work would be to clean and overhaul the time portion of the clock mechanism, and overhaul the weight pulleys, replace the time weight cable, and all the work would be conformed to the Secretary of Interior's standards for historic preservation. So the Friends are very interested in funding this project. We have managed to raise the funds to accomplish this, so we would like to offer the Town Board of Selectmen a check for four thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, so the work could be performed. That's in the Devonza proposal dated seven twelve seventeen.
Ford?
I think we should say, "Accept it." No-brainer.
Yeah. Thank you very much. I'll make the motion to approve accepting a gift of a check in the amount of four thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars to Friends of the Town Hall, Inc., to fund cleaning and repairing the clock mechanism of the clocks in the clock tower at Town Hall.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Obviously, if you have this completed as soon as possible.
Thank you very much.
Mr., by the way, Mr. Beeler apologized, he wouldn't be able to be here this evening.
Well, maybe we should try Mr. Bowers and see if he will do a picture of Joyce Davis either giving it to the town manager or to Luke. He takes good pictures.
Handing the check to the chairman? You can send it to the paper?
We have a discussion about the Great Use Hall policy, Mr. Owen?
Yes, we had a meeting recently about the use of the Great Hall and how it's going, and we discussed what we need to do budgetarily for the upcoming budget, and we also discussed the Great Hall use policy. And I think there was sort of a general consensus that we lack any kind of enforcement mechanism in the, in the use policy for groups that don't adhere to the use policy and clean up after themselves, or damage things, or what have you. And so I have developed a little amendment here to the Great Hall use policy that would add a new section entitled penalties. And the penalty would be that, you know, if there's pretty egregious ignoring of the requirements to clean up after themselves and leaving a mess, that there would be a fifty-dollar penalty assessed against the user group. And if we have repeated problems with a user group, that we could waive their, their user privileges in the future.
I think the fifty dollars, people could say, let's just pay fifty dollars and not clean it up. I would suggest that we make it more than that, like two hundred dollars.
Okay, well, I did want to be-
I'm not being greedy, but when you have, you have to clean up a mess and have somebody come up here.
Yep.
Fifty dollars doesn't do much.
I would take a look at the procedure on the back, and that's the cleanup procedure. And I'd like the line under the heading, "Please check off each item when completed and signed, and return the sheet with the key." I'd like that to be bolded, and whoever hands in the key is going to have to sign this. So what we were trying to do is, one, help them in terms of seeing what we wanted complete, and, two, to get somebody's name stuck on it that they had accomplished it. And they have to hand this form in when they hand in the key. So I think it becomes a little bit harder, Dave, to blow it off. That's what the hope of this form on the back would do. I don't know how anybody else feels, but that was what we were trying to accomplish.
And plus, they're going to lose, keep doing it, they're going to lose the use of it.
The use of it, yes.
And we could always, later on, if it continues to be a problem, then we could address it with a, you know, a higher deposit or something like that, and so it hurts them a little more that way. But I think, to me, this looks like it's a good, good approach right here to, you know, try and get them to, really look at the items they need to check, sign off on it, like Lynn said, then you've got a name attached to it, and somebody is responsible, you know, individual's responsible at that point.
Yeah, and so when you get the key, you got to get this, the staff has to get this form, and then we have a record of who's is responsible for having done these things.
But I still think we ought to have, put this penalty-
Oh, absolutely.
Into the regulation.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
I didn't hear you kind of push towards that, but, yeah. I'd make a motion that we add another section, which is penalties. Number one, do you want me to read it, or what do you want to do, just vote on it?
Yeah, I think we're good.
Okay, I'd say add penalties, and then the number one failure by user. Agree with that?
You want to keep the penalty at fifty dollars, or you want to raise it?
I think we ought to keep that, as Brad mentioned, try it at fifty dollars. If it becomes an issue, then we'll change it, because we can do that at Selectmen's meeting as a policy.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all is in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Next, we have the additional Josiah Brown Scholarship Award that, Mr. Owen?
Yes, as I, like I mentioned to the board, we discovered we did have another application, it just got stuck in a different file, and the two didn't get collated, and so it didn't make the list for last week's, or your last meeting. And this was a new applicant as well, so this is somebody that hadn't been in the scholarship program before, so that's good, we're getting someone new. And I did review his application, and it does meet all of the guidelines, including the income guidelines and such. So I would recommend that the board make an additional scholarship award in the amount of two thousand dollars to Seth Richardson.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Since we have Metrocast is gonna be no longer and we're gonna bring on to a new company?
Right, I just wanted to inform the board, I am not asking the board to take any action on this this evening, but I think it was last Wednesday or Thursday, I received this very formidable packet by special delivery and it's basically a request to transfer the franchise agreement from Metrocast to the new company Atlantic Broadband. I didn't give you the full packet because I didn't want to invade you with too much, I just sort of gave you the basics so that you would have some idea what's, what they're seeking. And there's their letter, there's a draft resolution that they're asking the board to adopt, and I think I put in some information about the company and what their plans and intentions are in this area, a Canadian company. And I have been in contact with them, I asked them if they could make somebody available to attend your next meeting on September 6th. I haven't gotten a definitive response yet, but that's the plan, is that hopefully by your meeting of the 6th, we'll have somebody here to represent the company and you can ask questions to them and get some information. Plus, you'll have the full packet of information at that time. And my understanding is municipalities are pretty restricted in what you can do in these circumstances by the FCC regulations. And there's very limited bases on which you could refuse to transfer the license unless you want to get into some kind of protracted legal battle with a large corporation. It's also my understanding that they are required to adhere to the same terms and conditions as the current franchise and including the funding for Wolfboro Community TV. So when they're here, you might want to ask them about their commitment to continue doing all of those things.
Would you want us to do this motion to postpone the...
Yeah, just to hold it over to your next, your next regular meeting. Like I said, I just sort of wanted to introduce the subject matter to the board this evening and what you know is coming.
Okay, I'll make the motion then to postpone consideration of the request for transfer of cable franchise, the board's meeting on September 6, 2017, and to invite Representative Metrocast and Atlantic Broadband to attend the meeting.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Moving on, any old business? Any other business?
I have other business. The CIP committee is starting their work and we were looking at the town dock area. There are going to be the town docks, the restrooms, and the paving of that area. And it was brought up at the meeting and the question was asked whether the Board of Selectmen would like to take a look again at all the designs that we had for down there and make sure that we have the dockside area plan that we want as we do these three proposals. It'll probably last around 20 years, so I'm trying to get a consensus of this board, do we want to leave it three separate projects? Would we like to take another look at the dockside area and see if there's any other changes we might like to make?
I'd be in favor of that, again and again.
What?
So I'd be in favor of looking at the whole plan as a, the whole plan, because, I mean, we are doing a lot of stuff down there now, or potentially doing a lot of stuff down there right now.
I don't have any issue with that myself, but I think that when it comes time, we need to single out each one of the projects as far as cost.
Yeah, I think very definitely, but then there's an overall...
I don't want to, I can see it as an overall thing, but I think each item ought to be, it should be itemized. That's my feeling.
Absolutely.
That sounds good. Glad they see it all together at once, you know, see it all fits together and everything.
Yeah, I agree with Dave, I think those are definitely three different projects, but there may be some other things that need to be done down there as we do.
As we tie it all together, too.
Yeah.
Because, you know, just for instance, out of the, that whole seating area that you have, that's kind of like right on top of the docks, but kind of not, I mean, that would be one of those places where you could tie in projects together.
Right, or it could be another project, but it would mean that the whole site will have developed and it seems like that would make some sense. You know, there might be a fourth one, it's the benches or something else, so I, I think Dave Ford had three plans, Mr. Owen, and maybe we can look at, there was one with a huge grassy area that took out a lot of spaces, I don't think that got any positive response. So there were two others that we might want to just take a look at or take something from one or the other of them, so.
Okay. Dave, are you okay with that? Okay.
What are we doing? I'm sorry.
Get a copy of those, maybe visit the drawings that they had come up with.
I think we're looking at to seeing if we want to do a full site plan of dockside, I think that's what we're looking at and maybe we could do it the second meeting in September. I think we have a bunch of public hearings, the first, whatever, I don't care when it is, but I think we should try to decide whether we want to add anything or do another project down there over multiple years.
Okay.
Any, anything else on other business? Can I just report, Mr. Owen?
Yes, I have a few things I wanted to report out this evening. First, there's a couple of events tomorrow evening I thought the board should be aware of. First, Governor Sununu will be in town at 5:00 PM to, I think he's doing a press release or a, signing an executive order or something at the police station. He's going to be announcing his support for updated animal welfare legislation. And of course, this is an outgrowth of our Great Dane situation and so that's at 5:00 tomorrow afternoon at the Public Safety Building. Also, tomorrow evening, the, there's going to be a faith forum on drug awareness and prevention, which he sponsors, wanted to make sure that the Board of Selectmen were, are aware of that event. I think Luke is planning to attend. And that's going to be at the First Christian Church at 7:00 PM. That's the one right across from the Wolfboro Inn, of course. Also, speaking of Governor Sununu, I just learned today, he's going to be here for another event on September 1st. I was queried this morning by Jeff Hayes from the Lakes Region Planning Commission if the Great Hall could be available for the event on Friday, September 1st, and it responded, "Yeah, we could accommodate that." What is it? Well, it's the, they're looking, they were looking for an appropriate space for the U.S. Secretary of Agriculture, Sonny Perdue, will be here along with the governor and they're doing a, some kind of listing tour, let me see if I can find it here, a Quality of Life in Rural America Listing Session. I take this is going to be, you know, for the whole state, they wanted a rural location. And I've already notified through Sarah Silk, the Ag Commission, so that they're aware of it, and she said she would notify the Farm Bureau as well.
Did you tell Tom Beeler?
I did tell Tom Beeler, I saw him earlier this afternoon when he picked up his packet, yes. And I mentioned it to Wolfboro Community TV because I thought they might want to broadcast the event also. The governor will be in town for a couple of events and...
Do you have a time on September 1 or just that date? Do you have a time?
On the Friday 1st at 11:00.
11:00, thank you.
Also, we learned last week that the local not-for-profit group Gala, the Global Awareness Local Action Group, received a $250,000 federal grant from the Northern Borders Regional Commission to acquire a property here in Wolfboro and turn it into what they're calling a maker space. As I understand, this is, this is sort of like an incubator for businesses and, you know, people that want to make things that don't have the equipment or tools or whatever available at home or whatever. So my understanding is that they need to raise about $50,000 in matching funds in next month. They're going to be very, very busy fundraising, I gather. I received notice that we have a new winery that's going to be having an open house on the weekend of September 9th and 10th. So if you want to try out their wines, it would be the weekend, it's the Winnebago Saki Winery, they're calling it, and it's at the 1810...
1810 House.
1810 House on...
LNA.
Head and Breakfast and Barn. And they haven't planted their vines yet, they're going to do that next year, but I guess they're bringing in grapes from elsewhere and have made wine at their other facilities, so that'll be a nice addition to town, I would think. I wanted to let the board know that the staff of the Parks and Rec Department and myself met with the trustees of trust funds yesterday to talk to them about the department's cemetery restoration and preservation plan. We have a couple of people in our Parks Maintenance Division that have taken an interest in restoring, cleaning and restoring headstones, including those that have fallen over or have been cracked and broken into pieces. And when they came to me and expressed interest in this earlier in the summer, I agreed to send them off to a workshop that was down in Salem, Massachusetts, I think, or Gloucester, somewhere down there. And it was a very hands-on kind of training where they actually, you know, did the things, they repaired headstones, they learned how to clean headstones, all this kind of thing. So they've come up with a program where they would like to start doing cleaning and repair work and it's going to require some extra of financial assistance, just the equipment that they need to buy to start the programs, about $5,400, I think. And so the trustees of trust funds agreed to, you know, financially support their efforts in this area from the sale of Graves' account where they have a very substantial balance. I just wanted to let you know that that is going on, something new. We have had some changes in the staffing of the Highway Department. We had two vacant positions, the department interviewed seven applicants, and we've hired two people as equipment operators, their names are Chris Raymond and Kyle Rondo. And I guess lastly, I just wanted to remind the board that I'll be headed out for a little vacation, starting on Friday, I'll be back on Wednesday, and I just hope those eclipse glasses work good.
And there are no clouds.
If I don't come back blind, staring at the sun.
Thanks, Dave. Committee reports, start down there. Dave? Brad?
Last night, I had a planning board meeting, we had a presentation by the Municipal Electric Department to do some tree trimming and removal up on North Wolfboro and some of the scenic roads up there. Then we had a, basically a lot merger come in and that was it for the planning board meeting. And I have a Friends of Libby meeting tomorrow night, going to.
Yeah, I attended the Milfield Joint Board Meeting, that's the group that owns the Dash unit, it's between Tufton Borough and Wolfboro, and we were working on our 2018 budget. I've attended two CIP meetings, we have looked at the Electric Department, the Public Works Department, and the Libby, and at our next meeting, we will be looking at the library. I attended the Economic Development Committee, they supported renewing a EZ Zone rehabilitation, is that what it's called, Dave?
ERZ, Economic Revitalization Zone.
For the Wolfboro Business Park area, that I guess you have to do it every 10 years. And they're working on communication, some advertisements, and going to look at their goals for the coming year. And before this meeting, I attended the Chambers Social.
I and the other selectmen attended the docks, the public hearing for the docks. I attended the Heritage Commission meeting, and I've been doing a little private survey on the roads of Wolfboro, so I can understand what David Ford says by driving, continuing to drive around on them and taking mental notes.
And I went to the public hearing and that's, that's all I have to report. I don't think there's any press here tonight, so public input, going here for public input tonight, three minutes, not to exceed 15 minutes in total.
Good afternoon, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. My name's Lou Granari, I'm on the Board of Directors at Kingswood, I am the grounds superintendent and the grounds committee chair, which means that all the physical structures and the ground is my responsibility. We try to be as good as we possibly can as far as neighbors. Unfortunately, in the past few weeks, we've had an issue with some sound ordinances. And it was brought to my attention that in 35 years that we know of, and probably 60, we've never had this issue before. All of a sudden, in a three-day period, we had, or I'm sorry, a five-day period, we had three separate, three complaints from one individual. Now, in order, we would love to be accommodating and we've done it forever as best we possibly can, but in this current situation, it arose and none of us really, we never had a problem with it before. So all of a su- So all of a sudden, we are encumbered now in the way we do business on a daily basis. As you know, golf can be crazy. People are addicted to it. They're out at 6:30 in the morning, and they're ready to go. We've often attempted with our grounds crews to start earlier in areas where we don't have budding neighbors. We've managed to do that very well for a long time, obviously. But currently, we, a couple times a year, three or four times a year, when we have our big events where we bring guests into town, we need to start a little earlier. That's created this problem. I'm here to look for support and in direction. We were directed by the Police Department to see Mr. Owen. Mr. Owen directed us to come here. So we don't really know where to go. I've looked at the ordinances. I'm here to ask, is there any way that we can, in your exceptions, number five of the ordinance, the sound ordinance, and I'm sorry if you don't have this, you wouldn't even know it's coming. There is a, I guess it's a, a use, a permit or a license to, as an exception to the variance, or a variance to the ordinance. Would that be something that we qualify for? Or can you all give me some indication where we have to go? Because right now, it is truly going to be a challenge to do our daily business for the six or seven months that we are open under the existing conditions.
I think you probably have to invite the people that are making the complaints to come to a hearing and give their position, too. I mean, in my opinion.
One person, okay?
Well, you should probably invite him or her to come here, and then, so the person doesn't say you had a secret meeting and we all voted to do it, you know?
Okay.
Yeah, are you saying that you need to start cutting the grass before 6:30 in the morning?
I'm saying that certain events, we have to start a little earlier.
Than 6:30 in the morning?
And only two or three times a year, exactly.
All right.
Okay? But that's not the issue. I can manage a 6:30.
Okay.
To be quite frank with you, the killer is 10 o'clock on Sunday.
Well, that's where I was the next place I was going to go, that we have a, a 10:00 AM grass cutting on Sunday.
Right, and that's.
So the 6:30, you don't have an issue with?
We can live with that. We can, I mean, yeah, we might have an issue on three different occasions, but we, I promise you, will manage that.
You can manage.
Okay? It's, it's the Sunday at 10, particularly in the fall. When the leaves come down, you know, it's a mess on certain holes. We have to get a blower out there and blend that. I'm not going to get a hand blower. There's a vacuum that actually sucks them up, and that's an issue. So that's our big, really, our main concern. We'd love to not have to deal with the whole thing, but if, if that's the best compromise, where we get some kind of variance, I mean, after 60 years of doing business, all of a sudden, we get one complaint, I'm really here out of concern. We don't need to be chasing this every, every week or every month.
Chief?
I, I would support the Board of Selectmen granting a variance to the ordinance or a permit, or however you gentlemen want to, and ladies want to couch this. But let me just explain to the Board of Selectmen, a similar situation we had probably 15 years ago at the Lakeview Inn, when the Lakeview Inn was having bans. And as you know, the Lakeview Inn was, was permitted, if you will, it had a permit to entertain, and much like Kingswood Golf Course has a permit to, to do their operations. And three people in that particular case called and made complaints. And the, the Lakeview Inn did everything they could to mitigate the sound, and it still was not enough. And it fell to then the, the Police Department to, to go to the Lakeview Inn when, when the citizens called and complained to the town, and the town directed them to the Police Department, and we went up and asked them to shut the music down, or turn the music down, and sometimes that worked and sometimes it didn't, and the people continued to complain. And it seemed like no matter what we did, or what they did more importantly, dropping the windows or what have you, putting up sound-absorbing drapes, it didn't work, nothing worked, and the people still complained, and the complaints went. The problem is that when, when, when I look at our ordinance, and I look at even the state statute in terms of noise and how the two mirror each other and how they differ, it became clear to me that even under the state law of disorderly conduct and the noise ordinances under the state law were really difficult to enforce, almost borderline unconstitutional. And I was reluctant to take action. Eventually, I was forced into a position, and I was the patrol sergeant at the time. I had to take action, went down, and we cited the owner several violations, some under town ordinance, some under the state disorderly conduct statute. This survived exactly five minutes in court, and the judge dismissed it. And, and the judge's comments here were very instructional. I just want to pass them on to the board. One person or three person, our people, Sergeant Rondo, does not a society make? And therein lies the problem, okay? In order to be successful in either a town ordinance violation in court, regardless of what's in writing, or with the disorderly conduct statute, or the noise statute as it's written under the state statutes, we would have to show some sort of aggravated aggrieved state relative to society as a whole, and we just can't show that in, in this particular case. So yes, we do have an ordinance. Yes, the ordinance specifies certain times, but it's really difficult to, to do anything in terms of enforcement. This is something that would become almost impossible to enforce because it's only simply dealing with one person. And according to what I've heard and what we've seen, what we've responded to, so take it for what it's worth, but this is really something I think has to be solved administratively as opposed to through other means. Thank you very much. And I do support this. I, I, I think this is a, this is, this would be a good solution.
Yeah, can I ask, does this have to do with, with the mowing of the greens, with the greens mower? Or is this a, a mower that's in the fairway?
It's, it's actually, the three complaints were dealing with blowers, not mowers.
Blowers.
Blowers.
Okay.
And that specifically, they're used, when we trim the sand trap, they just blow the trimmings out of the trap. And that's why I'm saying to you, I'm, we can work with that. We can work with it. But on the other side of the 10th, on the Sunday one, is a real problem.
Is, is this on the front side or the back side that you're getting the complaint?
We, we try to do the back side first, meaning down on the Lake Winnie side, because there's not as many houses down there. But unfortunately, when we have a shotgun start, where we have some of our larger tournaments, we're trying to get it all done because they're going off everywhere. So like, as I indicated, maybe three or four times a year, this becomes an obstacle to us conducting business on our normal routine.
Yeah, I was wondering whether, you know, we could grant a permit in knowing the date and the time you're going to do it, and if there are five of them, that we grant a permit that we can give it to the Police Department, and then they know if they get a noise complaint that it's been granted.
And then you want to do one for every Sunday?
Well, I thought you had, I thought you told me four.
I said we had four special events, four or five special events.
And those were the ones, I thought you said you couldn't work around. You're saying every Sunday.
I'm saying Sunday, or every Sunday. Because Sunday, to start at 10:00 AM, and we actually start at 6:30, takes a 30% of our day, our productive day away, meaning revenue generation. So if we can't open that golf course up until.
Can't hear you on the mic upstairs.
Oh, I'm sorry. If we can't open the golf course up to tee times by at least 7:00, then we're losing revenue down the line.
Okay, I hear what you're saying, okay.
Brad?
Yeah, I'll just say, I'm in a butter of the golf course, I live right on the, just below the fourth green there, so I'm on that early morning part there, and they're 37, going on 38 years now. Sort of those things, I mean, you just, you get used to it. I mean, you live in a neighborhood, something like that, you hear noises, I mean, you hear it a little more in the summertime, you get these cooler nights, you sleep with your windows open, and, and so you, you know, you hear them out there in the morning, which is, it's part of, out of the neighborhood, really, is what it is, so.
You live on a golf course.
Yeah, yeah.
But, and you're in a butter, okay? The, the complaint is not in a butter. He's 700 feet through trees and, and houses from the green he's complaining about. And the other, the other location, which is the practice tee, and I don't know where he came up with that, he's 1,700 and odd feet from the practice. So there's some confusion on my part. To be quite frank, I, I think it's crazy to continue to chase it. I think we should be able to resolve this.
Yeah.
Because it's just going to wait. You don't need to be wasting your time with these issues. You've got a lot of other stuff on your agenda.
I mean, it's, you know, it's a lawnmower, and I agree, you know, agree with, you know, you said in the fall, when your, when your blowers are going on the leaves, stuff like that, that is a little bit louder, stuff like that, but then usually our windows are shut.
Usually winters are closed in the fall, so you know.
Right, yeah, so, I mean, I have no problems at all with, with, with the times, you know, stuff, and I'd have no problem with the board talking about giving earlier start time for them on Sundays rather than at 10:00. Wouldn't, wouldn't bother me at all, being.
Time do, would you, you want to start?
6:30.
What time would you want to start on Sundays?
We can't, we can't.
You're forgetting that, I'm not used to this, guys. We, we'd like to have it static at 6:30, because that lets everything roll at the same time. Because it doesn't make a difference, on Sunday, we have more play, and in the morning, that's where we're going to lose revenue.
You know, if, if the neighbors are able to deal with 6:00 AM Monday through Saturday, it seems like it would not be unreasonable to have the same time as 6:30 on Sunday, and we can do it on a trial basis and see how it works.
And we will, we will, I promise you, we will try to police it ourselves. You can't promise it's not going to Sundays, you're going to hear it more, right, Brad? I mean, you, it is what it is.
It's only that one day.
Do I make a motion to that?
I'll make a motion.
I suggest that we have the complainant, I mean, I don't think it's fair for the Board of Selectmen to change a regulation and not hear the person complaining. My, my smart aleck comment would be buy the guy a pair of earmuffs. But I do think that, you know, in the, in the interest of equity, we shouldn't pass a motion if someone has made a complaint against the municipal thing. I think we should have them at the next meeting, and then we can decide. That's, that's what I would do. I would not vote on, I, I would not vote on it, I would not vote affirmatively on this just because of that reason.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen issue a permit to the Kingswood Golf Course to start their green and lawn.
Routine maintenance.
Maintenance at 6:30 AM on Sundays on a trial basis.
I'll second that.
The motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time. So the members of Kingswood and the Board of Directors. Any other, uh, public input tonight?
What? Yeah. Do we have any more? We've got one more.
Second.
Okay. Yeah, you bet. Motion's been made and seconded. In favor?
Aye.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.